We'll call our meeting in order, and I would like to thank you all for joining us, being that it's our very last meeting of our school calendar year. We are pretty excited, two more days of school, rejoice, all the students in here. With that, we will start with roll call. Mr. Kirschner?
All board members are present.
Next, we're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I ask that, following the pledge, we all stay standing for a moment of silence. We had a loss to our school family, a very tragic loss of a little kindergartner from Cherry Tree, which really saddens the community, and we'd like to pay our respects. So, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, this evening, we have a number of very special presentations of students and achievements of our teachers and professional staff. With that, I do want to say, we're doing things a little different, since we have so many to recognize. We're going to do pictures throughout the evening, so as soon as we announce a certain category and celebrate, Jennifer's going to be taking a picture right here, and we're just going to continue to the next one.
Over there.
As soon as we're finished with all the very special presentations, we will have a small break, so if those want to take some pictures with their artwork, you're welcome to do so at that time. And with that, we will begin with our very first special presentation, the Stephen A. Backer Carmel Clay School Teacher of the Year Award, and we'll turn to Dr. Wall.
Thank you, Leila. Very exciting evening to be recognizing our faculty, staff, and our students. First off, I'd like to invite to the podium Dr. Amy Dudley, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment; Ms. Kelly Davis, Building Principal from Woodbrook; Susan Backer and her family. Susan, welcome. Stephanie and Barb from the Foundation; and Mr. Ryan Newman, our Director of Human Resources, as we have a cast here presenting a number of well-deserved awards to our Teacher of the Year. Mr. Newman, would you do the honors?
I'd be happy to, Dr. Wall. Thank you for the opportunity to share with the school board and with our school community the recipient of the Stephen A. Backer Teacher of the Year Award. Just a little background on this award. Stephen A. Backer Teacher of the Year nominations are made by students, parents, and colleagues each spring. A selection committee consisting of teachers and administrators review those nominations, conduct interviews, and then select a recipient in April. The CCS Teacher of the Year is endowed by the Stephen A. Backer Teacher of the Year Award through the Carmel Education Foundation. This award was created in memory of Mr. Backer, who served on the Carmel Clay Schools Board of Trustees from 1994 to 1998, and from 2006 until his passing in March of 2009. Mr. Backer held the position of School Board President for five of those years, and is remembered as an advocate and supporter of Carmel Clay Schools. This year's recipient is Janet Volly. Janet, would you come forward? I'll embarrass Janet a little bit. Janet is a 2-3 high-ability teacher at Woodbrook Elementary. Dr. Wall, Mrs. Backer, and members of the Carmel Clay Schools Administration, and members of Mrs. Volly's family surprised her at a meeting on April 25th at Woodbrook, and I wish you all could see the reaction. She was shocked, I think. We kept the surprise. Mr. Volly, good job on keeping that a secret. Mr. Volly, her husband is a teacher at Woodbrook as well. And I always say, when I think of these events, I watch the reaction of her colleagues, because they didn't know either, of course. And what I saw, and I hope Janet saw, was their appreciation and their support for a job well done by a colleague who they respect and admire. That exemplifies the Carmel Clay School Teacher of the Year. Some of the nominations that we received from Mrs. Volly shared recurring themes that describe her as an educator who is attentive to her students' unique learning styles. She stimulates a love of learning. She keeps students engaged and challenged while they learn, and she's always researching new tools to help her students learn. Janet will now represent Carmel Clay Schools in the Indiana Teacher of the Year competition, but as I always say on this committee for Teacher of the Year, she's our Teacher of the Year. In our minds, she's the only Teacher of the Year, because the state couldn't always select a Carmel Clay Schools teacher. Couldn't do that, so we're very proud of Janet, obviously, and I believe we have recognition from the CEF. Yes. Mrs. Backer, would you like to speak as well?
Just to say, congratulations. Our children Ellie and Andrew Backer are here today. It's a privilege to be part of this award. Steve Woods, a huge cheerleader of the Carmel Clay Schools and its teachers. It's a great way for us to honor his memory, but congratulations to the Teacher of the Year, and thank you very much, and happy birthday!
Thank you.
Dr. Dudley has a few words to share as well.
Janet, we're so excited for you, and congratulations. And on behalf of the Division of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, we want to award you a $500 Professional Development Grant.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And finally, on behalf of the district, it's my pleasure to present you with an award from the school district that hopefully you can proudly display in your classroom. We're proud of you, Janet.
Thank you so very much.
And finally, I'd like to introduce Stephanie McDonald and Barb Danquist from the Carmel Education Foundation, who have a presentation as well.
Good evening. It's our great privilege to be able to help the Backer family recognize the Teacher of the Year every year. So, part of the Backer endowed grant is a $500 check for you within that envelope. So, congratulations again from the Backer family and the Foundation and from the school district. Thank you for all you've done. We appreciate everything.
It is really just such an honor to represent all the teachers in Carmel that I think work so hard every day for our students, and want to just do the best for the students each and every day. And thanks to the Backer family for their support, and I hope that we honor your husband in all that we do each and every day in every classroom across the district.
Susan, do you want to meet Jennifer there and take a picture with her? And your family? Kelly, would you go have a picture with her?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Wall.
Okay, moving along, we have a very exciting opportunity to recognize the Carmel Clay Schools Support Staff Member of the Year. I'd like to invite Mr. John Williams, Building Principal of Carmel High School, and Ms. Corinne Middleton, the Assistant Director of Human Resources, to the podium to recognize our CCS Support Staff Member of the Year for 2016. John, would you like to say a few words about this first, and then Corinne will do the presentation?
Sure. I'd like to take this opportunity as Principal of Carmel High School to congratulate Roberto, and you can come on up, Roberto. When Dr. Wall and the rest of the ESC folks brought this over, there was only one person in our building who was surprised that Roberto won that, and that was Roberto. I heard all week what a deserving recipient he was, and certainly know that. As you know, in our role of helping kids, all of us serve different parts, and if you've been in our building, it's over a million square feet under the roof, you know, keeping it clean and making it ready for kids is a huge part of what we do. Also, you'll know if you've been in our building that it's hardly ever dirty. Part of that is because our kids are so good, but also, every once in a while, they do leave a mess, and it's quickly cleaned up. So, to Roberto, who represents all of our staff, our custodial staff, and our maintenance staff, who does such a wonderful job of keeping our building ready for kids and ready for our staff, I want to thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to say what an honor this is for me to recognize Roberto. I was on a committee with six other team members who went through 85 nominations to get down to one staff member, support staff member, that we unanimously voted as our support staff of the year. We have a staff of over 1,000 support staff, so for Roberto to be recognized is such an accomplishment. Some of the things that stood out for Roberto is that he is a silent hero of Carmel High School. He has sacrificed his weekends to work a shift over Friday, Saturday, and Sunday to ensure that all of the community that has access to the high school sees a clean, well-kept building. He is behind the scenes. He is proactive and comes to his supervisors with ideas of how to better facilitate the cleanup or tear down or set up. And he also helps staff and students who may need help translation with English. So, he's oftentimes called down to the front office as our translator. So, again, Roberto, I just want to congratulate you on behalf of Carmel Clay Schools. Here's a check for $500.
Okay, for about a week or two weeks, there was no artwork here, and that's really bare. So, it's exciting to have the new young artists. Wall, Full Again, and Dr. Amy Dudley will be introducing our young artists and to the artists and to their family. Thank you for sharing your talents with us. It means a lot to walk in here. We have a lot of meetings in here. And so, to have student artwork up here really makes a difference in our demeanor, in our schedule, and it's a not-so-subtle reminder, we're here for kids. So, thank you for sharing your talents with us. Amy?
Thank you, Dr. Wall. And this evening, it is my honor to honor our young artists, that we will, we're very fortunate that we'll end up having their artwork for the next six months in our boardroom so that we can enjoy it and the public can enjoy it. Before I honor our young artists, our art teachers, I know many of our art teachers are here, if you could stand up and be recognized? Thank you so much for working with our students each and every day and having them create such magnificent pieces of work. So, when I call your name, if you come up and shake Dr. Wall's hand and get your certificate, and then you can wait up here to shake the board's hand. We have Kaia Lestig, a 4th grade student at Carmel Elementary; Kathy Hung, an 11th grade student at Carmel High School; Ayaka Mura, an 8th grade student at Carmel Middle School; Ainsley Strothcamp, a 5th grade student at Cherry Tree Elementary; Connor Heegie, a 6th grade student at Clay Middle School; Owen Bales, a 4th grade student at Collegewood; Catherine Barr, an 8th grade student at Creekside Middle School; Lauren Key, a 4th grade student at Forestale Elementary; Teresa Adamson, a 5th grade student at Melhawke Trails Elementary; Mira Vaughn, a 4th grade student at Orchard Park Elementary; Evelyn Tenonhouse, a 5th grade student at Prairie Trace; Allison Washburn, a 1st grade student at Smokey Row; Lauren Schaefer, a 5th grade student at Tom Meadow; Bryant Burke, a 4th grade student at West Clay; and Myla Bonowitz, a 4th grade student at Woodbrook Elementary.
I'd like to invite Mr. John Williams to the podium as we recognize the DECA International Competition of Excellence representing Carmel High School. John?
Thank you, Dr. Wall. And actually, I'm only going to be up here for a few minutes, because we have a long list of things to celebrate today, and like any good principal, I parceled a lot of this out. I delegated it, so. But I do want to say that in just a minute, you're going to be able to hear from four of our groups who've had amazing accomplishments, one outstanding, amazing student, and then four of our staff members, three teachers and a coach, who've earned some amazing awards and recognitions. And I think, and you've heard me say this before when I've been up here, we're very fortunate of the things we get to celebrate, but they don't come easy. And I just hope, as you listen to the accomplishments of these groups and these teachers and this individual, that we don't ever take for granted what happens here at Carmel High School or in Carmel Clay Schools. These results that you're going to hear, these awards that you're going to be told about, represent hours and hours of commitment and hard work from a very talented student body led by a very talented and passionate and dedicated staff. And I think as we celebrate these things, it's a mistake that we could easily fall into of thinking, okay, that's another state championship, or that's another Teacher of the Year Award. But every one of these represents a huge amount of work that each and every one we should be proud of. So, we ought to have one of these every night, but there aren't enough nights in the calendar to do that, so we have to lump them in. But again, I want to thank the folks who are going to present tonight for being here. Charred Reed is going to be here in just a minute representing DECA. Mr. Jim Streisel is going to talk to you about our highlight, our newspaper. Brian Spillbeller is going to talk to you about our radio station, WHJE. Mr. Peter Beck, a math teacher, is going to talk to you about one of our math competition teams. Melinda Stefan is going to introduce to you the Presidential Scholar from Carmel High School. Sue Hahn is going to talk to you about one of our orchestra teachers, who's the Orchestra Teacher of the Year. Tracy Hadden is going to introduce two Teachers of the Year from our Social Studies Department. And finally, Mr. Inskeep is going to talk to you about one of our coaches. So, feel, be prepared to be impressed. And at this time, Charred, would you come up?
I'm Charred Reed, and I want to take a minute just to congratulate some of our outstanding DECA members this year. For those of you who are unfamiliar with DECA, it is an international marketing organization that has a competition every year, and this year, there were 218,000 members in DECA around the world, and the top 15,000 were invited to compete at the international level. We were able to have 156 kids qualify for that competition, which is, my understanding is, the most in the world from any school. The following students either placed as finalist, which means they are in the top 16 to 20 for their category, depending on the event, and that would put them roughly in the top 0.7% in the world in their category. So, I want to start by bringing up the finalists, and I don't know, many of them are unable to come tonight because of final exams, and they do appreciate, you know, the honor, but they have a lot of studying to do. So, Meredith Black, Truman Henderson, J.D. Arland, Brian Schaefer, Matty Gant, Mara Stecker, Emily Kamek, and Danny Anderson. All right, so Matty participated in a startup business plan where she created her own business and wrote a business plan for it. Mara did a 30-page operations research project about the Pacers, and Brian was in the accounting series event. Great job, guys. The next group of individuals placed top 10 in the world in their respective category, placing 9th Shaquille Zia and Akshar Patel. As Shaquille comes up here, he was our chapter president, and he actually placed 8th in the world in an event last year, so he is the first Carmel DECA student to go to internationals three years in a row and to place twice in the top 10, so. At number 7 in the world, Swaytha and Sarah Tina Fong, come on down. Swaytha and Sarah did a 30-page operations research project for Vox Accessories. Very good job, ladies. At number 6 in the world, Sidney Clark and Annie Kozak. They did the community service project for the Ronald McDonald House, and actually, Sidney was a world champion last year, so she went first in the world and 6th in the world in her career. Number 5, Alessandro Dru Tachi and Jonathan Livermore. These gentlemen did an international business plan and did a phenomenal job. Number 5 in the world, Connor Barclay and Michael Oaken. Number 4 in the world, Anish Luther and Grace Marquisi. They created an independent business plan from scratch and did a phenomenal job with that. Great job, Grace. And then, to be top 3 in the world is a really huge accomplishment at DECA. It's the thing that they make a huge ordeal over and give you a big glass trophy. And we actually had three groups get top 3 in the world. At 3rd place, Miles Minar and Alicia Patel. Alicia did an operation research project about human resources at EWS. Great job, Alicia. And world champions this year, we had two different groups place 1st in the world in their events. Molly O'Connor, come on down. Molly did an operations research project about employee engagement for the Renaissance here in Carmel. Great job, Molly. And also Jessica DeeDee and Rachel Swenson, world champions. And they did a public relations event in which they had a whole campaign of reaching out and building community partnerships with businesses in our community, and worked firsthand a lot with Ms. Schwab. Thank you for working with them and giving them a lot of great opportunities. Thank you, board, for having us here tonight. We appreciate it.
News Magazine and website staff, as well as the Acumen, our quarterly, topic-based news magazine. The 89 members of the Highlight staff worked tirelessly all year long to inform, educate, and entertain the student readers of Carmel High School. Along the way, the staff earned several state and national recognitions, and I am here tonight to share those accomplishments with you. First, for the seventh year in a row, the 2014-15 Highlight earned a Hoosier Star from the Indiana High School Press Association. Comparable to a state title in athletics, the Highlight was one of only two Hoosier Star winners in the large school category. And just as a heads up, we learned just a couple of days ago that the 2015-16 Highlight is yet again a Hoosier Star finalist, so we'll know the winners in October at the IHSPA convention. Next, for the fourth consecutive year, the Highlight was named a George H. Gallup Award winner from the Quill and Scroll International Journalism Honorary Society. The Gallup is Quill and Scroll's highest honor, and in its critique, Carmel's paper earned superior achievements in all three of the organization's individual categories: coverage, visuals, and writing and editing. From the Columbia Scholastic Press Association, for the fifth year in a row, the Highlight earned a Gold Crown, the CSPA's highest honor. The Highlight was one of only 19 national winners in the hybrid category, a field that encompasses publications that provide both print and web news outlets. Next, from the National Scholastic Press Association, the Highlight earned a Print Pacemaker Award. This is the second year in a row for the Pacemaker, which is often considered the Pulitzer Prize of scholastic journalism. Also, at the national convention this past spring in Los Angeles, the Highlight and Acumen earned runner-up Best of Show recognition in all three of the categories we entered: news magazine, news website, and newspaper special edition. Finally, this year, the staff members earned numerous individual recognitions in a variety of categories from both state and national organizations, including the IHSPA, the CSPA, Quill and Scroll, the NSPA, the Women's Press Club of Indiana, and the American Society of News Editors. To accept recognition on behalf of the entire staff for these achievements, it's my pleasure to introduce the six members of this year's Highlight and Acumen Management Teams. These seniors work tirelessly to coordinate our student journalists and to ensure accurate, timely, interesting content throughout the year. So, without further ado, we have Christine Fernando; Emma Love; Aaron Shi; Shaquille Zia; our Acumen Editor-in-Chief this year was Stephanie Zhang; and this year's Highlight Editor-in-Chief was Liann Yu. I will point out that Aaron is going to Harvard University next year, and the rest of them are going to apparently take over the Indiana Daily Student, all at Indiana University, so.
Wow, it's too bad your paper earned so many awards. Man, that's really too bad. Jeez, congratulations. Wow, that's a lot of awards. My goodness gracious, good job. Good job, editor. Wow, way to go, Jim.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
My name is Brian Spillbeller. I'm the Station Manager at WHJE, 91.3 FM and WHJE.com, and I'm always humbled when I come to this event to be surrounded by all the excellent programs that we have. And one thing that 10 years ago, I was hired to work at Carmel, and I remember sitting in Mr. Williams' office, and he said to me that at Carmel, it's all about where you set the bar, and if you set the bar, you know, at the appropriate place, the kids in our community can meet it. And I've been proven that time and time again. And it's also really rewarding to be in a district where, as an educator, you can set a bar, you know that your kids will respond because of the families in the back a bar, you know that your kids will respond because of the families and the backgrounds that they come from, but also because of the resources that you're provided. There's only about 200 radio stations in the country that are housed in high schools across America. There's about six of them actually in the Indianapolis area. And it's not a free operation. It costs money, it costs time, things break, we have to fix them. We've always had such tremendous support from the school district to be able to provide the students this really, really enriching environment. Not only do we dedicate ourselves to telling the stories of the community, we actually now stream live on the internet, we've been doing so for some time, but through Facebook, I was, somebody had reached out through Facebook to our station's page, and this person teaches at a really small school on a French island east of Madagascar. And so of course, we spent one class period looking up where the heck this island was. And the teacher had actually sent me about a 50-slide PowerPoint, all of these worksheets, and what this teacher's doing is teaching his students English. And he had come across our radio station on a Google search, had found our podcast on iTunes, and actually found one of the, what we call Vox Pups, which is a series of interviews where they answer the same question, and this was, "If you could have any superpower, what would it be?" And this teacher took that two-minute piece of audio and revolved an entire English lesson around it. So not only are we influencing the community and telling the stories of our community, but we're also on a global impact as well, and it's really rewarding to be able to do that. We recently were awarded Station of the Year by the Indiana Association of School Broadcasters. This is the fifth time in eight years that we've been awarded this, and it's really a reflection of the work of all of our students, all 50 students that we have on staff. But we've brought along some that were recognized individually as place winners, and I'd like to have them come up by name. Kendall Walter, Sam Widerhaft, and Leo Robleski. In their own ways, these students are constantly documenting and providing our community with programming, everything from varsity football games to the Off the Wall show featuring our own Superintendent Dr. Wall. And you like that title? He came up with it, I can't take credit for it. So I really appreciate you guys honoring us and all of the other great programs that we have here, and let's move right along. Thank you.
Congratulations, that's great. Love your station. I listen to it in my car. Hey, joyous. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job. Way to go. Congratulations. I like your station. I listen to it in my car, and I like the one you did on bullying. That was very good. Yes, yes.
Hi, my name is Peter Beck. I'm a math teacher at Carmel High School. I teach calculus and pre-calculus, and I am the sponsor of the Moody's Make a Math Challenge at Carmel High School. For more than 10 years now, the Society for Industrial and Applied Mathematics has partnered with Moody's Financial Corporation to host what is known as the Moody's Make a Math Challenge, also known as the M-Cube Challenge. In this challenge, students from across the country will work in teams to tackle a real-life problem competing against one another for college scholarships. During this challenge, students will download a problem, and then they have 14 hours to create a viable solution using applied mathematics. Their proposal is then submitted to panel professionals who critique the solutions thoroughly. The top six teams are then flown to New York City to present their proposals in front of a panel, who in turn put the students through rigorous interrogation of their work. This year's challenge involved the topic of car sharing. Students were tasked to identify which car-sharing models currently in use are viable for the future, considering the technology changes. For instance, driverless vehicles may present a unique opportunity for new models to be created. Our students were instrumental in creating one such model. I'd like to introduce members of our team: Simon Wangowski, These students went before the panel and earned second place in the nation, along with $15,000 in scholarships applied to the college of their choice. Please join me in congratulating these students.
Oh my gosh, what did you all come up with? Any ideas?
Congratulations.
Congratulations, this is fantastic. Congratulations, good job coaching.
Thank you.
I'm Melinda Stefan. I'm the College and Career Programming and Resources Coordinator at Carmel High School, and I'm extremely pleased to present our United States Presidential Scholar to you tonight. But before I do so, I want to share a little information about the Presidential Scholars Program. The United States Presidential Scholars Program was established in 1964 to recognize and honor some of our nation's most distinguished high school seniors. Each year, over 4,000 candidates are identified on the basis of broad academic achievement and on having scored exceptionally well on the SAT or the ACT. Those candidates are then invited to apply for recognition as a U.S. Presidential Scholar. The application includes essays, self-assessments, and secondary school reports and transcripts. Candidates are evaluated on their academic achievement, their personal characteristics, their leadership and service activities, and the quality and content of their essay. Of the more than 5,600 candidates this year, 160 students were named as U.S. Presidential Scholars. Being named a U.S. Presidential Scholar is one of the highest honors for high school students and for high schools and districts. And these scholars represent excellence in education and the promise of greatness in our young people. All United States Presidential Scholars are honored for their accomplishments during the National Recognition Program held in June in Washington, DC. And during this all-expense-paid trip, scholars meet with government officials, educators, and other accomplished individuals. To commemorate their achievement, scholars are awarded the Presidential Scholars Medallion at a ceremony sponsored by the White House. It is my great pleasure to share that Carmel High School celebrates the naming of one of its current seniors as a United States Presidential Scholar. This student excels in all areas of her life, yet she is cognizant of areas where she can improve, and she never shies away from challenge. I have experienced both her humility and her poise firsthand. And her passion for seeking truth and making significant contributions is awe-inspiring. I am most pleased to introduce to you Cynthia Yu, United States Presidential Scholar. I also am pleased to share that during the application process, U.S. Presidential Scholars candidates are asked to nominate a teacher who has made a significant contribution to their educational experience. Cynthia nominated her AP Capstone Seminar teacher who taught her to strike a balance between listening and participating in class discussions, as well as creating intellectual relationships in the classroom. Similarly, his efforts in the course served to confirm Cynthia's interest in research and prepared her admirably well for future research endeavors. At this time, I would like to introduce John Love, Carmel High School English teacher, Media Center social media extraordinaire, and U.S. Presidential Scholars Program distinguished teacher.
My name is Suhan. I'm the orchestra teacher and the Performing Arts Department Chair at Carmel High School. It's my distinct honor and privilege to introduce to you tonight my esteemed colleague and workplace sibling, older sister, Mrs. Elizabeth Olley-Davis, as the 2016 Indiana String Teacher Association Teacher of the Year. In order to receive this award, she was nominated by her peers, other teachers throughout the state. And then the finalists are considered by a committee of teachers, and this year, we had a record number of nominations from all over the state. But when it came down to it, it was kind of a no-brainer that Ms. Olley-Davis should be the String Teacher of the Year for our state. At the high school, we have a nickname for her. Students like to call her Mama Odie. Odie is Olley-Davis, obviously, and we're lazy over there. But we call her Mama because she's somebody that takes care of all of us, not just her students, but even her colleagues and myself personally. She's somebody that's so caring and warm, and she reaches out to all of our students, and she has the unique ability to make every student feel like they're the most important student in the entire school. And that's really something incredible in a school of 5,000-plus big. And then, of course, there's her content knowledge and her skill set as an incredible teacher. She's somebody that inspires me and motivates me every day, and it's been my honor to work with her and to introduce her to you tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Elizabeth Olley-Davis.
My name is Tracy Haddon. I am the Social Studies Department Chair at Carmel High School, and I am very honored and pleased tonight to introduce two teachers from our department, both whom are being honored. I would say that both of them represent the best of history teachers at Carmel High School. They have sought out ways to make history engaging and interesting, and I think that the honors that they're receiving really are well-deserved. Our first honoree is Will Ellery, who is being, or who has been named the National Veteran of Foreign Wars Teacher of the Year. And to present this, I would like to ask Richard Lear to come. He's from the Carmel VFW, and he can explain the award and why Mr. Ellery is so deserving.
Hi, I'm Richard Lear, commander of the local VFW post 1000 and 3. The Smart Mayor VFW National Citizenship Education Teacher of the Year Award is annually given to the top elementary, junior high, and high school teacher from the United States. Will was selected out of over 1,200 applicants just for the high school award. So Will is quite a teacher, and we're very proud to present the Smart Mayor VFW National Citizenship Education Award to him. And I'm just going to tell you a couple of things about Will, because I don't think he's going to have a chance to give his speech tonight. He gives a great speech on duty, honor, and country on a teacher, but I don't think he's going to have time to do that tonight. But I want to tell you, Will, since he's been at Carmel High School, and he's been there 11 years now, he's been a teacher for 21. He started the Veterans Day convocation at the high school. He also sponsors an essay contest at the high school about veterans. He's taken students for the past 20 years, I believe, to the American cemeteries in Europe and has them place flags on the graves of veterans that have died there. And then one of his trips, he actually took a 90-year-old D-Day veteran, him and his students, took a 90-year-old D-Day veteran with him to the cemetery at Omaha Beach. So Will is quite an accomplished citizenship teacher. He's exactly the type of teacher that the VFW is looking to honor. So congratulations, Will.
Katie Kelly. She is being given or awarded the Patricia Bearing Teacher of the Year Award for Indiana. This award is given by the National History Day Foundation, and Mrs. Kelly always has her students participate and compete in the National History Day. Every year that she has sponsored this, I think we have had students that have gone to nationals, been recognized, and won awards there. Many students are so engaged and love this program so much that she has also created a club for students in 10th, 11th, and 12th grade to continue this throughout their high school years. And again, she has supported in their research a number of winners. But I know that the description of the award is for a teacher who also incorporates this and makes an impact in the classroom. And I will say that History Day tries to engage students by having them do authentic research, and she has really embraced these strategies and was very instrumental in curriculum writing for the World History Curriculum, and a lot of those strategies that were supported by National History Day are now at Carmel High School, and we can engage all students. So congratulations, and thank you very much for all you do.
Wall. It's my pleasure to introduce yet another wonderful professional educator in our district. And as you've seen this evening, just so many great educators, and obviously, we have great families and students, but I think it's awesome to recognize some of the wonderful feats of our educators in our district as well. One of these is Mark Ellington, who's spent his entire professional career in Carmel Clay Schools and is a graduate of Carmel High School. As a teacher at Clay Middle Schools, he served as the boys' track and field head coach for almost 10 years, and the boys and girls cross-country head coach at Clay until 2009, when he came over to become the head coach of our girls' cross-country program and fill some legendary shoes of Chuck Kepin. And Mark did not shy away from that at the time. In fact, he's captured six straight state championships and won state runner-up in seven years as head coach, and has touched many lives in all the ways that he does through his dedication of working with young people. The team has also finished in the top eight teams nationally at the Nike Cross Nationals, and tonight, I'm here to recognize him as the National Federation of High Schools State Cross Country Coach of the Year, a well-deserved honor.
Okay, moving right along, we're going to recognize the Midwest District Health Education Teacher of the Year by Shape America. Dr. Tom Harmus couldn't be here this evening, so I'm going to be introducing, if Jenny's here, Jenny Pershue. Jenny, are you with us tonight? Jenny, welcome. Jenny was the Indiana Health Teacher of the Year and then went on to the Midwest and won that as well. Jenny, we're honored to have you here this evening, and congratulations. I'd like to invite Dr. Amy Dudley back to the podium. We have very distinguished leaders and administrators, teachers, coming to the podium to be recognized with the Woodrow Wilson Fellows. Dr. Dudley?
Good evening again. It is my honor to recognize three Woodrow Wilson Fellows. And I'd like to call them up to the podium that we have from Carmel High School. Justin Quick. From Carmel Middle School, Ramona Rice. And from the Educational Service Center, Kristy Cloud. And I'd also like to call up to the podium Dr. John Wenzinski from the Kelly School of Business. And he's going to tell us a little bit about the Woodrow Wilson Fellows and what these fabulous educators have earned. So, John.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Thanks for having me this evening. Just want to take a quick moment to recognize the fellows, describe a little bit about the opportunity that they've earned, and then thank you all for allowing us to participate this evening. I'm an assistant professor at the Kelly School of Business, and I earned my PhD from the School of Education. So I live in both worlds, both as a scholar and as a teacher. And the Woodrow Wilson Foundation provided us a grant opportunity to essentially fund full-ride scholarships to earn MBAs from the Kelly School of Business. And this is the inaugural program, the inaugural year for the program. We received over 400 applications from across the state. And of those 400 applications, we could only award 15 scholarships. So with those odds, Carmel Clay locked up three of the 15 scholarships, which is quite amazing. And I was telling these individuals, it's sort of like winning a lottery ticket, only they didn't scratch off a ticket. They earned a $50,000 scholarship to participate in our program. And I just want to very quickly describe to you why they're sitting here. We use three evaluation criteria, basically. The first was a commitment to student learning. And it was very clear that each one of these individuals is fully committed to the learning that happens in their classroom. Secondly, we evaluated the impact of achieved results. And each one of these individuals has really made a difference, not just within their classroom, but within their departments and within their schools. And third, and finally, we were looking for a willingness to lead. I'm very confident in saying Justin, Ramona, and Kristy represent the future leadership of Carmel Clay Schools, and it's our honor to work with them over the next 18 months as they earn their MBAs. Please join me in recognizing each one of them for their participation in our program. Congratulations. 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 I look forward to working with guys.
Thanks, Amy. It's my honor to invite Barbara Dankwitz and Stephanie McDonald to the podium to award the Carmel Education Foundation's Spring Grant recipients.
Thank you very much, and thank you for having us. We are thrilled that this spring grant session, product that we're having here tonight, we are able to give away $22,000 to our teachers in classroom and professional development grants. So we are excited to do that. We thank you all for joining us at the Ghosting Goblins. We hope you answered your telephone when we called you for the telethon. All of these things are what helps us provide these grants to these awesome teachers in the Carmel Clay Schools. This year, we started a professional development grant along with a classroom grant. So this is our first year to award the professional development grants, and we are so excited with what the teachers have come up with, that they want to do to better themselves and obviously bring it back to the classroom to share with their students. So if you would, when I call your name, please come forward. Our first recipients were Laura King and Gelica Becker from Carmel High School, and Jeff Carter from Clay Middle School, with their principals, John Williams and Todd Crosby are here. They're bringing language to life. They're going to be bringing a professional to Carmel to help with the world language of all three schools, the junior highs as well as the high school. So thank you very much. Lucy Cawkins is a name that every elementary teacher in the Carmel Clay Schools is very familiar with. And so we are sending Heather Banks, whose principal, Tim Ferris, Lauren Dunlop, principal of Kelly Davis is her principal, and Liz Wagner, Todd Crosby's teacher, to the Lucy Cawkins Coaching Writing Institute. So they'll be bringing back all kinds of wonderful things to share with their students. Next, we have Catherine Staples from Town Meadow. Tim Ferris is her principal. And Kristen Kennedy from Smoky Row, and Kim Barrett is her principal. This is a real cute title for their grant. They're the two techie teachers taking Denver. So they are going to a conference in Denver, and we're going to be real excited to see what the techie teachers come back with. Next, from Carmel High School, we have Teresa Kane, Dom David, and Margaret Winans with Principal John Williams. And they are doing an online teacher training subscription. The grants this time have been very exciting as to what they have, all these wonderful ideas that we can do for professional development. Thank you, Teresa. From Carmel High School, we have Jim Peterson, again, John Williams, the principal. And he's going to a monologue training in New York City. So he is going to be coming back and teaching his students about writing and giving monologues. Nathan Loy from Carmel Middle School is doing communication, presentation, and pronunciation training. Had to make sure I said that one right. Pronunciation training. Yes, you may go right and say, "Thank you." Peggy Lehman from Carmel Middle School is going to a workshop, natural resources and economics. She's going to be heading out west to Yellowstone National Park. Mary Halfman from Carmel High School is going to be doing a Hoosier, 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 a little bit like, I didn't go to IU, Barbara did, Hoosier, writing project. It'll be exciting to see what she comes back with as well. And Chris Atkinson, the principal at Cherry Tree Elementary, is going to ISTE 2016 or Bust. So he's going to be presenting there as well. Congratulations to our professional development grant winners. And Barbara is now going to do our classroom. I do want to tell you, October 29, 2016, is our Ghosting Goblins. So put it on your calendar so we can give more money away for grants next spring.
It gives me great honor to be able to announce the classroom grant recipients for the Carmel Education Spring Grants. If the teachers are not here tonight, would the ones that are collect the envelopes for everybody else, please? We would greatly appreciate it. First, Jen Marlowe from Carmel High School, along with Sarah Gillum and Alyssa Mastin, John Williams' principal, did a grant for anatomy and clay learning systems. Erin Mayer, Madeline Gill, Mary Wattstrom of Clay Middle School, did math UC materials, Todd Crosby, principal. Allison Wynn and Destiny Henderson from Forest Dale Elementary did resource iPads. Principal Deanna Pittman. Tricia Wigan, Julie McGowan, Holly Adams, and Janine Singleton from Carmel Elementary did standing workstations. Principal Megan Clingensmuth. Christina Herring, Lauren Doran, and Amy Samatsky from Prairie Trace, their near pod and their innovative, creative involved. Principal Jill Shep. Dom David, Teresa Kane, Margaret Winham, Carmel High School, Principal John Williams, they did hand-on robotics and computer programming. Erin Nass, Kelly Grog, Gina Potter, Lisa Bellamy, Michelle Jansen, Principal Todd Crosby at Clay Middle School, Y Try Resilience Breakthrough Curriculum. Kelly Friedman and Tracy Smoot from Carmel High School did creating community connections. Elizabeth Quackenbush, Orchard Park Elementary, Quackenbooks, a student-run bookstore, Rhonda Turner, principal. Laura Johnson, Creekside Middle School, Tom Harmus, principal, Creekside Cafe. Elizabeth Elliott, Smoky Row Elementary, and then Kim Barrett and Amy Settaski from Smoky Row, principal and assistant principal, Standing Desks. Rachel Seaver, Creekside Middle School, Principal Tom Harmus, Makerspace. Don Matters, Stacy Gerth, Maura Bradley, Emily Plum, Kristen Kennedy, Smoky Row Elementary, Building 24 Skills with Makerspace. Principal Kim Barrett. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, very much. And we want to congratulate each one of the different teachers that received these grants. And we look forward to seeing them in the classrooms and across the district. And thank you all very much for supporting us. And good night.
At this time, we will take a brief intermission for all of those who might want to go study for finals, or take a break, or have a beverage, water. Yes. So have a nice evening.
You'll get recognized tomorrow, too.
Oh, really?
Oh, for the graduation.
That was very impressive. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. Moving right along, seeing that we do not have any public participation today, we'll go straight into consent. Make it a motion to approve consent.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Action items. Our first action item is our miscellaneous materials adoption. And to that, we turn to Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. This evening, I bring to you a recommendation for miscellaneous materials adoption. We have several new courses at the high school and some changes in some materials that we had teachers, administrators review those materials, look at how that supports the curriculum and the standards, and choose the very best materials that will support that teaching for the next six years.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Make it a motion on the table to approve the miscellaneous materials adoption.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, we have Policy 7510, Use of School Facilities. And to that, we will turn to- No, there's, there's not a date certain. It's a matter of increasing it each year until you get to that point, unless, again, there are some waiver provisions. For example, if you had a, if your operating balance in the Food Service Fund was more than three months of operating balance, then you could get a waiver and not increase it at all.
Okay.
But we're not, we're very financially healthy, but not that healthy, and so they're requiring us to increase it. The plus side is, is we do, of course, make good use of the money, and we've, we will increase our use of scratch cooking and fresh products and so forth. Last year, you may recall, coincidental with this, was requirement for the Affordable Healthcare Act, and so we had some additional cost for healthcare expenses for some of our food service employees, and so we actually needed to increase, aside from this, we had some increased costs because of that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Then we have a motion on the table to approve the school lunch price increase. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next, we have our discussion, course waivers. And with that, we turn to Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. This evening, I bring to you for discussion four waivers that we are requesting from the Indiana Department of Education. The first waiver we're requesting is to continue. We currently have a waiver for interpersonal relations to be able to use that as the requirement for the health credit as well, so students can have the opportunity to take either interpersonal relations or the health, and they get their one required credit for either course that they take. The second waiver is, the second two waivers are for our Project Lead the Way courses. We have Project Lead the Way Biomedical Sciences and Project Lead the Way Human Body Systems. Both of these courses are courses that we added last year in our Program of Studies. They are courses that are taught by science teachers, they're in our science department. We are applying for a waiver to get CTE funding, or Career and Technical Education funding. Right now, we do not qualify for that, because in order to get the CTE funding, the teacher that teaches the course has to have that CTE vocational license. However, it's science teachers that teach these courses, and so we're applying for that waiver, because these are courses that are technical and STEM, and they do qualify for that CTE funding, which is $500 per student. So, we're applying for that. And then the fourth waiver we're applying for is for our Avid courses. Currently, the state of Indiana does not have an approved course for Avid. So, the Avid course is designated as a 500 general course. We are applying for a waiver for our students to be able to get college and career-ready credits for the Avid, because the Avid program is preparing them for college and career-ready. So, those are the four waivers I'm presenting this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. We'll open it up to questions. Anybody have any questions for Dr. Dudley this time? Tricia?
I do, actually, a couple of questions. I don't ever remember, maybe it's my memory, but I don't even remember discussing and voting on a waiver process. Is this a new process, or?
No, we, the only current waiver we have is for the interpersonal relations, and the waiver is over a period, a number of years. And so, it may have been where we've brought it before to the board. I don't, I mean, I have not brought waivers to the board since I've been in this position, and so our waiver for IPR has been withstanding.
Okay, so at least a while. And how, are they typically granted? Is this a pretty sure process, or not?
Well, the IPR one has been granted in the past. It'll be yet to be seen if the Project Lead the Way would be granted, but, you know, hopefully that is, as we look at that funding, to get the CTE funding for that.
So, those two courses would continue, it's just if we could get some...
Correct. We would, correct, we would continue teaching the courses. We're just asking for the waiver, so that when we do our CTE funding report, we could add these courses to that report, and then also receive the funding for our students to take that course.
And then finally, the Avid. Do you know any other school Avid programs that have a waiver for college and career-ready?
I'm not sure if other schools have that waiver, but this is certainly within the realm of the waiver. So, I would, my prediction would be that they would approve that waiver.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Kathy?
I apologize if this catches off guard, because I just, it just popped in my head. Are these different than waivers? Like, I know when I started teaching multivariable calculus, I had to apply for a waiver to offer that course to the state. Is this a different waiver thing?
No, they're not different from those waivers. However, you, probably at the time when you started teaching that course, it was a non-standard course that did not have the approved, and now the state does have that approved course in their course of study. And so, so you no longer have to apply for the waiver once it's no longer a non-standard course.
Any other questions?
So, taking a vote on this at our regular meeting, our June regular session? We'll give you ample time.
Correct. Perfect. Great, thank you very much. We will take, we'll take care of that. Okay, moving right along. Dr. Wall, we have our superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. And a follow-up to the legislative meetings that Tricia and I had, I've been in, as we had the discussions with Senator Coats' office and Senator Donnelly's regarding the reauthorization of NCOB and ESSA, Senator Coats' office has followed up with me and invited me to Washington, DC to help them unpack ESSA. So, thank you, Tricia, for all your hard work with that. Be going there the week of June 6 to meet with his team that has been part of the process to make this act into regulations. The federal regulations have not been issued on ESSA, and so part of the discussion Tricia and I had with them was, if we can be of help, let us know. So, they called, and I said, "Okay." We're hopeful we get that same kind of response from the state, as this thing gets, if this gets unpacked, we're hopeful. But I'm very pleased to report to the board that Senator Coats' office has taken up that offer, and I'll be going to DC. And I'll be excited to give the report back on that when I return.
Will you be there the same time that they're doing the Presidential Scholar Awards?
You know, I don't know, but I caught that, too. I may note, I'm gonna follow, I don't know if it's the same time.
Well, that would be neat to have you there.
I could ride on their coattails.[1550.13][1550.13](LAUGHTER).
You could.
The big wigs.[1553.13][1553.13](LAUGHTER). That'd be very cool.
Is that when the NSBA advocacy workshop is also?
I don't know. I really don't know the date on that.
Okay. I know that was in June.
I know, I don't know the day, but I remember that from the conference. I'll check on those.
Any other fun, exciting things to share?
That's as fun as I've got. I'm pretty, I'm excited about that, yeah.
Well, that's really, that's fantastic news. Well, we'll turn it over to board member reports. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share this evening? Okay, well, moving right along. Meeting adjourned.[1598.13][1598.13](LAUGHTER).